Board of Adjustment.
I'm sorry.
This meeting isn't held in a, this meeting is being held in accordance with NJSA 10:4-12, the Open Public Meetings Act. I would like to call this meeting to order. Francisco, are there any sunshine announcements to share?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, notice has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Monday, July 8th, 2024. We have the notices to be marked. This is B1 for the record.
Okay, Ms. Espinoza, will you please take roll call?
I see Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Barron.
Here.
Commissioner Shadid. Vice Chair Arullo.
Yes.
And Chair Coyle.
Present.
We have a total of six commissioners tonight.
Okay. Can we please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Iris, can you please swear in any staff that you have in attendance?
Yes.
Francisco, any correspondence or germents to share?
Uh, no, all new business items will be moving forward tonight.
Okay. Tonight on the agenda, we have, um, one, two, four extension cases, uh, which we will hear first, and then we have case Z22-079, which is the preliminary and final major site plan for CND variances at 146-152 Glenwood Avenue. Since, um, we have been requested to have seven commissioners present to take a vote, the only thing we will do this evening is have the presentations on the part of, um, Mr. Joseph and his planners, et cetera, and there will be no public comment tonight. We will hold that off until our meeting, um, which I believe is July?
July 25th.
July 25th, where the public will have time to make their comments, um, and we will have questions, et cetera, once again. Okay, so without further ado, um, I would like to start with, um, case, uh, Z2024-0025, a one-year extension, um, and Veronica Schmalking.
Good evening, members of the board. Veronica Schmell of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicants here for a one-year application. The property is 250 Barrow Street, Block 14, 106, Lot 46. The underlying approval was Z21-033, and the applicant is requesting one additional year, uh, to be able to construct the project in accordance with their approvals. By way of brief overview, the project was just a removal of a rear yard shed and a staircase, and they would hope to construct a new rear yard deck. The date of approval was April 7th of 2022, so it expired April 7th of this year, 2024. We're requesting a one-year extension to April 7th of 2025. The reasons being, the applicant is, uh, you know, just a couple, not a big developer. They did not keep an eye on the approvals, nor did they know that they could lapse. So they are also facing some financing troubles. They would just like, uh, one additional year to be able to construct the project as approved.
Is there anyone from the public here to comment? Okay, um, what about hearing from the city? We don't have to do that? Okay, any comments from the commissioners? Okay, um, if none, um, I'd like to, um, ask for, um, a motion to vote.
Madam, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve case Z2024-0025 as presented to the board this evening.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Can we take roll call?
On a motion to approve, Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Barron.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid. Vice Chair Arullo.
Yes.
And Chair Coyle.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
Okay. Yes.
It's 43.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Uh, our next case is Z2024-0034. It's for three one-year extensions at 203 Danforth Avenue. Is Jim Burke here?
Good evening, Chair and Board members and counsel. My client, uh, received approvals in July 28th, 2022, so it hasn't quite expired, but it's real close. And, uh, he had suffered COVID and then long COVID, and so he was sick for a while and could not get going while the interest rates were low. And then, uh, this past year, he recovered, but unfortunately, he got sick again because he looked at the interest rates. And so he's, uh, so, uh, anyway, um, he's asking for three one-year extensions, uh, and hopefully the board can see fit to grant those.
Okay.
Okay.
Do they, do we have any comments from our commissioners? Anybody? Okay. All right, then let's take, uh, can we take a vote?
Staff recommends approval.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we need a motion. We make a motion for case Z2024-0034.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case Z2024-.
34.
Hmm?
Okay.
He's, he's right.
Dash, uh, dash 0034 as presented to the board this evening.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Francisco, please take vote.
On a motion to approve, Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Barron.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid. Vice Chair Arullo.
Yes.
And Chair Coyle.
And with interest rates dropping, I wish for that too, yes.
Yes, yes, thank you all very much.
I think we all want interest rates.
Motion carries all in favor.
They're horrible.
Okay, our next case is Z2024-0035. It's a one-year extension at 297th Street.
Good evening, Stephen Joseph of Casano Quigley Trami for the applicant. Uh, this is the second one-year extension on this. The client's not ready to begin construction on this with construction costs and financing costs. They're requesting an additional year.
Okay. Any comments from the commissioners? Okay. Can I get a motion to vote on case Z2024-0035?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case Z2024-0035 as presented to the board this evening.
Can I get a second?
On a motion to approve, Commissioner, sorry. Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Barron.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid. Vice Chair Arullo.
Yes.
And Chair Coyle.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, our next ca, congratulations. Oh, you're saying for the next one. You're gonna be hitting for the next two, I guess, okay. Uh, for case, uh, Z2024-0036 for an extension, uh, the address is 296 Union Street. Uh, can I get a motion? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. We're just moving along here tonight.
For the record, Stephen Joseph, uh, for the applicant, um, this is the first one-year extension on this. If approved, it'll expire August, um, 2025. This is not a developer. You can see it's not, not an LLC as the applicant, that it's been difficult for, uh, individual to put together a project of this size and needs more time.
Okay. Can I get a motion for case? Do we have any comments from our commissioners on this?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion for Z2024-0036?
Do you, you wanna ask staff first or?
Yeah, staff. Francisco, you have?
Uh, staff does recommend approval with previous conditions.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Z2024-0036 as presented to the board this evening.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On a motion to approve, Commissioner Burns. Commissioner Barron.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid. Vice Chair Arullo.
Yes.
And Chair Coyle.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay.
Oh my God, it's horrible.
Okay, and our final case for the evening is case Z22-079. It's for 146-152 Glenwood Avenue, and Stephen Joseph is presenting again. Okay.
Stephen Joseph of Casano Quigley Trami for the applicant. Good evening, everybody. 146 Glenwood Avenue, um, this has been on the agenda for quite some time. We have carried many, many times, uh, either there wasn't a full board or at the request of, uh, the community. Unfortunately, we couldn't, uh, come to full agreement with the community with what to do with this building, um, but, uh, we do have Dennis and Antonio, our architects, is here, here this evening to show you the plans. We do have Carolyn, our planner, and I understand we're gonna hold off on public comment until, uh, the next hearing when we do have a full board. So this is, um, and this is gonna sound. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, yes.
Mr. Joseph, you know, you have requested, uh, a full board. We only have six here, and we've told the public, uh, that the next meeting, which I guess would be July 25th, they have a right to come in. Now, look at the transcript, they might look at the video, and they'll question your experts. So your experts will be available next, next time for them as well, correct?
Yes, uh, 25th? Great.
And hopefully, we'll have a seven-member board for the 25th, and then we can proceed to go forward. Now, as you said, you're going to, uh, present your witnesses. I guess the commissioners, if they have any questions, or your commissioners, we'll do that as well.
Absolutely.
And then, uh, we'll go from there. We will hear from staff, we'll do that on the 25th.
Okay. Wonderful, yes, something to, yeah, just keep the ball moving forward here. All right, wonderful, thank you. So this is, uh, approximately 17,500 square foot site. It's a fairly large, fairly large site. There's an existing five-story, um, dormitory building. It was the last use on the site. It was previously used as an apartment building. St. Peter's had been using it as, as a dormitory. What we're proposing to do here is renovate and restore the building. It has been deemed historic, so we had to work with the historic officer on the renovations to the building, on the facade, uh, on the work. There's no expansion of square footage on the building, um, whatsoever, and we're proposing 53 dwelling units. There will be a, a 10% affordable component to this building, um, and this should sound very familiar because there was another application, 104 Glenwood, that was heard by this board. It's the same, uh, same application, basically. Dennis is getting set up now, trying to keep talking a little bit until he's ready to go.
Just, Mr. Joseph, to, to tell the board, the building as it now stands, is that vacant or is it, uh?
It, it is currently vacant, so there was actually a casualty at the building. There was, um, a, a big, a pipe burst. So there was some remediation that had to happen because when a, a pipe bursts in a building that old, there's mold and there's asbestos that need to be removed. So there's some permits and stuff that were pulled related to that. There was some additional work done at the property, but it, it is currently vacant, uh, because of that, the, the pipe that burst.
How many dormitory units are in there at the, at this, or were in there at the?
Dennis has that information, he can go through that with you. You know, dormitories are set up.
Differently.
Differently.
So Mr. DeVino is your first witness.
That's correct.
He is an architect, he's licensed in New Jersey. He's been here before, we recognize him as an architect.
Yes.
His license is still valid, and so?
Yes, it is. Wonderful.
Dennis Michael DeVino. D E V I S N Victor I A N O. Yes, it is. What happened? That one didn't work.
Is it up on, uh, commissioners' screens now?
Yeah.
Not yet.
Ready, but it's, move for the mouse. There we go.
All right. Great.
Okay.
Is it on everyone's screens? I see it's only on two.
I have it. It's on mine.
Kid, you don't scream.
We're good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this is just a backup, in, in case we had problems with this one, so I'll just gonna keep this up in case it's needed. Again, my name's Dennis DeVino from DeVino ALO Architects here in Jersey City. As Mr. Uh, Stephen Joseph mentioned, at the building 146, 150, um, Glenwood Avenue, this is one of four projects that St. Peter sold. Um, this, three of them were dormitories. I believe this board heard, uh, 104 Glenwood, uh, which is, was, uh, 21 units, um, possibly condos or, or rentals. Uh, this is, um, uh, we met, uh, back actually in 2022 with historic, uh, to get a ruling on this and whether or not it had, it had historic significance. We met with Ms. O'Neill, she wrote a, a memo on it, and that is, uh, essentially why the building, uh, we, taking the building as is, there's a, a total of 46,635 gross square feet. We're not adding any additions, um, so, uh, the building volume will remain the same. We're essentially taking the number of dormitories that are in there and, uh, changing them over and adding some additional units and creating multi, uh, a multifamily. So the building characteristics, it's a four-story brick. The lower level has steel components because there are, um, wood-bearing walls in the building. The building, um, has a fully usable basement. Uh, right now, the, the, oh, um, should I say, the college used the basement, no, not for dorms, but they did use the basement for a computer lab. There was, um, laundry, some laundry rooms down there, there was a chapel, so, um, uh, common restrooms and, and a lobby. So the basement is a fully usable, and the, the east wing of the building was mostly for services. That's where the electric came in, the sprinkler systems came in, and there are boilers. So the building is, uh, I mean, the, the basement is 100% usable, so, uh, as part of this presentation, as part of, of the renovating the building, we will be utilizing the basement for, uh, for some duplexes, for some three bedrooms, which, uh, will, um, most likely, uh, be associated with the affordable units. And, um, so I'll go through, um, the building also has five entrances and a courtyard. It's unusual design of the building. The building is kind of sectioned off in, in quadrants. In other words, there's one separate entrance and it feeds essentially a vertical column, which, uh, on, on each floor, there'd be either two or three dorm, uh, um, doors that go in, that went into dorm rooms. So, and you, it, the, the entire floor doesn't, they don't communicate, so that's why the building has four separate entrances. One entrance would feed a, basically, a column of, let's say, 12 units, and then each, so you have four of those. Uh, so it's difficult, it would've been difficult to, 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 to try to redesign the building because the floor lines don't even match up. And the fifth entrance, uh, is in the, all the way in the back, um, of the courtyard. The fifth entrance is, it was used by the college dormitory for a lobby. That's where the students checked in, that's where they got their mail, and that is actually in the lower level, that was actually in the basement. The only characteristic, uh, that we're really changing in the building is that we're trying to take advantage of the flat roof. This is one of those buildings that, uh, were able to try to have some outdoor space. Uh, so we extended all of those stairwells to the roof, and we've created a, a roof deck. So the dorm, uh, there's, like I mentioned, there are no dorm rooms in the basement. Each floor, there's one, uh, floors one through four, um, uh, were serviced by, by a total of 41, uh, dorm units. Each, uh, total dorm units, but the 41 dorm units had a total of actually 86, uh, dorm rooms, uh, 51 total bathrooms. Uh, there were actually bathrooms in the, in the, in the basement as well. There were common bathrooms, but each dorm room usually just only had one bathroom. Uh, the courtyard was essentially a gathering space, that's where, and a security, kind of the, the two-point, um, security entrance, you'd come through the courtyard initially, and then, of course, your, your, your main door. I, I probably mentioned this during the 104 testimony, uh, but I didn't wanna bring it up to the, uh, to the board again. We're here because, because this property is zoned university. Universities allow dorms, but not allow multifamilies. The United, the International Building Code does not, uh, look at this. A dorm, a dormitory is an R2 use, just like a multifamily is an R2 use. So, uh, there's actually no change in use as far as the building code is, is, is considered. Uh, that's why I think they're, you know, if, they're, regardless of what happens to this building, whether or not it stays dorms, or whether or not it becomes a multifamily, it can still be renovated as far as the building department is concerned because it's, it's no change, it's, there's no change of use, as far as the building department's concerned, and R2 is an R2. So I'll go through the plans, um, real quick. Again, you see the, uh, the elevation. I do wanna point out one thing that the community board mentioned that it's probably, uh, on your plan, I don't, it's probably just worth, uh, me, um, testifying to it, but if your plan, you, we probably see some lights right in this area right here. Uh, the community board wanted us to remove those lights because of light pollution, so this plan in particular shows, uh, no lights, uh, on these two panels, no uplights on these two panels. Okay. Here we go. So the basement will have a total, uh, what we're proposing, the basement will have a total of, of, um, five units, uh, eight bedrooms. The first floor, uh, there'll be, on the basement, there'd be one studio, one three-bedroom, one two-bedroom, and two one-bedrooms. On the first floor, or a total of 12 units, one three-bedroom, uh, three two-bedrooms, uh, six one-bedrooms and two studios, and then on floors, uh, uh, two through four, there'd be a total of 12 units per floor, 10 two-bedrooms and two one-bedrooms, for a total of 53 dwelling units. 79 bathrooms, full bathrooms, six half baths, and 81 total bedrooms versus, if you actually look at, um, the dormitory rooms of total of 86, that's, you know, we actually have less, less rooms, less bedrooms. Uh, I wanna, uh, point out, I know the, again, the community board was concerned about, uh, water, um, usage and, and sanitary and sewer usage, but I think it's important the board, when we often look at density, we look at it based on units per acre, or how many units in a building. When you're looking at it, when you're comparing it to a, a different use or a, a dormitory use, the MUA actually looks at it based on the number of students. So when you actually do the calculation, if, assuming that there'd be two students per, per, uh, dorm bedroom or dorm room, uh, you'd actually end up with, uh, a total of 33 less occupants in the building, the way it's designed right now. Because the MUA looks at a dorm room, one, uh, they, they count the number of students. Again, assuming that one dorm room's gonna have two students, when you do the calculation, and then when they look at a, an actual, uh, residential bedroom, they look at a one-bedroom as two people, assuming that they put two people in the first bed. A two-bedroom would be three people, two people in the first bed and one person in the second bed. And a three-bedroom would be two, would be, uh, four people, two people in the first bed and then one in each of the other bedrooms. So in actuality, when you do the calculation, we, this, this proposal has an actual total number of 33 less occupants. Okay, so let's continue to go through the plan. We'll, we'll start up here with the, uh, the roof change and the rear yard and the courtyard. All right. So this is a, a site plan, which is also showed essentially a roof plan. Uh, you could see the rear yard, the setback, I believe, was about 20, existing setback was about 20 feet. Uh, we're proposing a five-foot buffer along the back. Uh, this, along, on the left side here is where the bicycle storage will be, is, uh, and we created a bicycle shelter. Here, you can see the detail here to the left. The bike shelter, uh, and was actually a comment by the community board, we had it on this side, and we had the dog run on this side. Since this side was closest to the single-family residence here, and this side was closer to, uh, another multifamily, we did, uh, we, um, we, um, made the adjustment where we put the dog run here, next to, the next project next is 140 Glenwood, uh, where we put the dog runs next to each other. So again, it was a community comment, we made a, we made the, the adjustment for the communities, uh, based on community comments. Another comment, if you look at some of the drawings, the, the plans, you'll see some bubbles throughout the, throughout the plan. These bubbles are all revisions made by community suggestions, or, um, or maybe possibly by, um, by the client suggestion, but most of these bubbles are, are based on some community comments. There's a bubble here where you see we put some landscaping in the, on the, on the roof deck. Again, being adjacent to the, uh, neighboring property, a single family, um, they had wanted us to not have the roof deck go that close to the property line, so we created a buffer on the roof, and we took that area of the roof deck away, and we added that little bit of area that we took away here, and we put it in the back. So that was another community comment that we've, uh, made changes. Uh, there was some, also some concern about landscaping in the courtyard. Uh, one comment was that we would try to salvage the existing vegetation. Uh, we took an assessment of what kind of plants were in the courtyard, and what we willing to try to do is, uh, I, we don't anticipate being able to salvage those, um, trees because of, in our opinion, if the board, uh, finds this approval, uh, approved, that the courtyard is really gonna be a, a perfect staging area for a contractor, uh, to be able to use that to, to build or renovate the building because this, it's less, it'll be less traffic and less, uh, disruption to Glenwood Ave. They could come in and out, they would, uh, would come in and out of this area right here and, mm, right there, and it'll be the only place that they'll just, you know, that they'll take away, um, a possible, um, parking space, and they'll just use the courtyard to stage in and out. Uh, so we don't think that the trees are, are salvageable, but we do believe that the trees can be, we, we replanted somewhere else in a community. So that would be our recommendation. Uh, we, of course, would wanna save, uh, the trees, so, uh, again, our recommendation would be, and, and it was a recommendation to the community board, that we would plant them somewhere else to their, you know, to their location in the communities, in the, in the neighborhood somewhere. So we'll, um, move on to the floor plans. You could see this plate will give you the existing basement on the left side and the proposed floor plans on the right side.
And Dennis, when we, when we think of a basement, we typically think of something that's, you know, below grade or mostly below grade. Uh, if you could just point out on, on the plan, and also when you get to the elevation, uh, what the windows are for that and?
Yeah. Well, this is a, this is considered a story below grade, so it doesn't actually add a story to the building. It would have to be six feet out of the ground in order for it to be considered another story, but it does, it is, um, high enough out of the, out of the ground where you can get, um, window, uh, the, the required windows for light and air. So we are able to use it, um, for a, um, for an act, for, to put units in there, to put bedrooms in there, so that you could see it from, uh, you could see windows along this wall, windows along that wall, windows on, in, in this wall in the courtyard, windows in the rear. So the building is, the windows in the front here, so there, we have, um, plenty of opportunity to utilize the basement for, for residential units. Uh, the, the, um, the duplexes are, uh, over here in this side right here, you can see these interior stairs within the units, they'll be duplexed to the first floor. And the rest of these units, uh, you could see two-bedroom, studio, one-bedroom, and so on, and then this, where the lobby is right now, where the, where the, where the dorm had the lobby, should I say, we're gonna maintain that as a lobby right here. Uh, this is also an area that we can have, um, a little, um, exercise room, right over here in this back right corner. So we're, we're trying to provide some amenities for the occupants as well as the roof deck. So moving up to the second floor, all the floors from here on up are the same. Uh, again, comparing this, the left side is the dorms, uh, the existing dormitories, and the right side, uh, are the proposed residential units. Uh, here, you can see how the, the one, two, three, four, five different stairs within this courtyard space. I know there was some discussion about trying to get parking and just the way the building is constructed. and just the way the building is constructed, and the way it's designed, parking would be almost impossible to be able to negotiate parking around all these access points. So you'd come into this entrance, and then as you go up the stair, you can see there's one door here, another door there, and another door there. So this platform, or this flat, if you will, has three separate units on that particular quadrant. So, so that's how the building is designed. And we maintain that, same vertical circulation. Second means of egress is through, is, again, no change of use. So we don't have to, we can continue to use fire escapes in this building. So we do have, we're utilizing the existing fire escapes for the second means of egress. So that takes us through, through. I'm sorry? So this, a building like this requires a second means of egress. Well, this would be one means, the second means would be a fire escape. Yeah, so as long as we don't change the use, we can maintain and utilize the fire escapes. Okay, the exterior of the building, we are proposing to power wash the existing brick. Again, this is a historically sensitive structure. So we're gonna maintain the, the brick facade. It'll be washed, it'll be repointed. The windows will all only to be replaced, the doors will be replaced. The, the bricks will be pointed. And we're probably going to be inspecting each one of the window headers for a building like this, because they, they're steel angled headers, to see what kind of condition they're in. And they'll be replaced as necessary. So this, this is a view of, here we go. We are proposing, and then we, we got this cleared through historic, just a, there's nothing really identifying this building from the ground. So we're proposing a base, a water table, if you will. So we're just changing the material just at this lower level, or the basement level right here. So yeah, so this is the basement level, and then as you go up the building, that's the other four stories. The, we got approval. These, initially, the lettering had backlit, and historic told us that they would not allow those to be backlit. But we are, they were, are allowed to keep, I mean, numbers. We're allowed to keep the numbers, so 146, 152. We had a darker base water table, and historic wanted something lighter. So we brought this into this other shade work, to work a little bit more with the existing brick. That's all I have as far as the building presentation. I can, if I just testify that we have been in, with the community board, I probably at least five times, whether, in some cases, it was personal. It was, it was on a one-to-one basis. And sometimes we did a Zoom meeting, but we did meet with them quite a bit of time, quite a few times. We got several comment letters, we responded to several comment letters. And as you can see, as some of the changes that we've made, and some of the revisions, that I'm pretty sure we've met most, if not all of their, all of their comments. Bird-friendly windows, again, very similar to what we did on 104 Glenwood. So I feel confident that we've, we've met the community board's needs, and hopefully the zoning board.
Thank you.
Just to clarify some of Dennis's comments about the community. So there was three different community groups we met with in this area. McGinley Square is the big community group. We met with them, I think, two or three times over Zoom. Highland Avenue has its own block association, we met with them as well. And then there's a House of Worship in the area, where the client met with that congregation as well.
Yeah, so I just, just, just to go on record, I don't know if the board has everything in their portal, but May 3rd was Ms. O'Neill's initial letter, historic letter. We've had a comment letter back to the community board on 10/10/23. We had another one on 2/19/24. And we have read, and we agree on the comments from engineering. So we went, we went through, and where is that one? I just wanted to put the date on that.
March 22nd, 23.
March 22nd, 2023, engineering report. We have read and agreed to work with engineering on those items.
And with regard to the affordable units, there's five affordable units proposed in the building. Two three-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms, and one one-bedroom are being proposed. The only other thing I want to mention that's related to architectural is parking. Parking's not feasible for a bunch of reasons. The most obvious being, we can't take down the building because it's historic. But it's also not required in the city's ordinance. If affordable housing is being proposed, there's, there's no parking requirement. So even if this was a new construction with the affordable component, there would be no parking required for the building. So that's our architectural testimony. If the board has any questions for Dennis.
Not at the moment.
Great.
We'll hold out questions till the end.
So we'll bring up Carolyn now and get her sworn in.
I do. It's Carolyn Worstel, W-O-R-S-T-E-L-L.
Carolyn, your license is current and full standing?
Yes, my license is in good standing this evening. Good evening, everyone. Nice to be back and see you all in person again. So we're here this night for a handful of variances, mostly related to the fact that this building is in the university district, but it is no longer serving a university use, and so we need a use variance. So that's sort of the biggest one we're asking for this, this evening. And then there are a couple of smaller bulk variances that relate to, one of them is relates to that university district that we're in, and then the other has to do with some, the location of bicycle parking. So as was mentioned, this, this property is located in that university U district. But it's no longer owned by the university. What we're here tonight is to propose a 53-unit multifamily residential building, which is not a permitted use in the university district. The university district permits a handful, only handful of uses. Colleges and universities, which obviously is not applicable here. Parks and playgrounds, dormitories, fraternity or sorority houses, or meeting halls. So because it's no longer owned by the university, a number of these uses really just aren't applicable anymore, such as college and universities, meeting halls, dormitories. As has been mentioned previously, this building is in decent condition, good condition, and is, you know, consistent with the historic character of the block. And as such, it's not suitable for demolition to make way for another permitted use, such as parks and playgrounds. Or, so, so there's a limited number now. We're sort of whittling away that, that the types of uses that we can be actually permitted in this U district. So finally, we're sort of left with these fraternity sorority houses as, you know, potential uses. Originally, this building was developed as an apartment complex, and was, you know, bought by the university to be turned into dorms. And so this project really is just returning the building to its previous use. It's not promoting, proposing any expansion of the existing structure, as was testified by Mr. Davino. But we are looking to have sort of extensive internal renovations that would, you know, sort of return it to its original use while still updating the building to modern building and fire code standards. And so really what this is, it's an adaptive reuse of the structure as a multifamily residential use, which really, I believe, is appropriate use and presents a better planning alternative than, than the two other uses of fraternity or sorority house. Those uses are also still residential in character. However, even though they're permitted in the U district, you know, they're permitted in the U district, but there's no maximum density for either units or bedrooms in the U district. So there is really no limit to how many people could be potentially pulled into that, that building. So I think that what's being proposed here tonight, which is transferring this, or adaptively using this building to create the 53 units of residential housing, is really in character with those permitted uses. But it really allows for this project to provide housing for a wider range of occupants, to include families and young professionals. And there's not a limit that says that students of the university can't still live here, but it just would no longer be university-run housing. And I think that this use, this proposed mid-rise multifamily use is really consistent with the character of the block. The north side of Glenwood Avenue, those properties that are not in the U district are generally, are in the R3 mid-rise multifamily district, which is that R3 district. And the R3 district permits very explicitly mid-rise multifamily dwellings, dwellings of up to eight stories on lots of at least 6,000 square feet. This project, property is over 17,000 square feet. So it's well within, it's very well-sized to allow that mid-rise multifamily use that would be permitted elsewhere on the block in that R3 district. So we really think that this project allows for that creative diversity of housing, and I think it's overall appropriate for this, this, this block. And as Mr. Joseph mentioned, you know, there, there is no off-street parking being proposed here. But the existing building is being, is proposed to remain. So it really limits and prohibits us from creating, you know, parking on this lot. And to, to provide it within, you know, what, the few areas that are not occupied by building really would not be a best pla, best practice, because it would eliminate sort of the impervy, or the, the pervious coverage, the landscaping that is really what creates a wonderful character to this particular building style. So I, I think that overall, this site is very particularly suitable for the proposed multifamily use, and that overall, that, that it meets those standards for that use variance. I mentioned there's one other small bulk variance that relates to that U district. And that is for the minimum buffer adjacent, adjacent to a residential use or district. So the U district requires that there be a 10-foot buffer between university uses and residential districts or uses. We require relief from that requirement on the western side lot line and the northern rear lot line. Providing such a buffer, particularly on the western side lot line, would be a hardship as the building maintains the existing five-and-a-half-foot stepback. So there is no, there's not even 10 feet between the existing building and the adjacent property line. So it really would be a hardship, because you'd actually have to demolish the building in order to create a 10-foot buffer. Within the rear, we request, we're requesting the, the buffer because there is, like, the dog run and the bicycle parking are both within that buffer area. So they, they don't really meet the, quite the definition of a buffer, which would be just landscaping. But I do still think they still further the intent, because they're still, you know, helping to provide distance between both the residential uses on the adjacent properties and the existing structure. And I think overall, while we're requesting the, the buffer, the variance for the buffer, I'm not, you know, the, the project itself is changing the use. You know, we're gonna be providing a residential use. So really, the intent or intent of the buffer, which is to create distance between high-intensity university uses, such as meeting halls or classrooms, and residential uses, that, there's no longer that need, because we're now putting a residential use next to a residential use. So I think, you know, this, this, the, the variance can be granted in both that there are hardships related to the existing structure itself, but also that there really is no longer a real need for such a buffer because of the change in the use. And then finally, we are requesting a variance for the bicycle parking. And this is for the location of the parking only. We are providing the necessary number of parking spaces. But instead of providing an interior to the structure, we are providing them exterior to the structure in that covered parking area at the rear. And, and we just think that, that the location of the bicycle parking outside mitigates some concerns regarding electric bicycle storage indoors, which was another concern that was, I believe, raised by the local community at one point or another. But we just found that this location would be the best fit for this application, given the, the existing structure.
And Carolyn, if we were to locate them inside, we would have to go up or downstairs, to whatever interior location, correct?
Yeah. It's, it's an unusual layout. So really, providing it in the rear yard is really the best possible fit for providing the bicycle parking. And I think overall, this project promotes the various purposes of the municipal land use law. It's an appropriate use, consistent with purpose A. We're providing residential uses in a block that is primarily residential, and is consistent with the R3 district, which is up and down this block. It is consistent with purpose C, where it's providing adequate light air and open space. So this, this project has, will have no impacts on light and air to adjacent properties. We're providing no exterior changes to the building that would create additional light or shadow impacts on adjacent properties. And then I think it promotes a desirable visual environment, consistent with purpose I. So obviously, it's, you know, the building itself is going to be cleaned and repointed, and the new windows. So I think those are all, you know, positives for the, the building itself. And then, you know, new landscaping is gonna be provided within the courtyard area, reinvigorating the landscaping, and new street trees will be provided along the sidewalk. So I think overall, it will present a much more desirable visual environment to the, to the public from the sidewalk in the street. Looking at the negative criteria, I don't believe that granting requested variances would result in a substantial detriment to the general welfare. This project is an adaptive reuse of an existing structure, which was formerly a dormitory for use as a mid-rise multifamily dwelling. So it's, it's creating, as I said, a residential use on what is otherwise a residential block. And the essence to use to house people does not change. You know, it is a dormitory, and it's gonna be still housing for people as a residential use. But the renovations itself do provide benefits, such as building, bringing the building up to modern building and fire code standards, which I think is, is a benefit, as well as the improvements along the sidewalks and the new street trees. So I think overall, there's no substantial detriment there to the public welfare. And then granting requested variances likewise will not result in a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of zone plan and zoning ordinance. This project is in a university district, but it no longer serves a university use. So we are trying to adaptively reuse the project, consistent with the R3 district, which is the other zone that's along this block, and permits multifamily, mid-rise multifamily housing. So I don't believe that this would impair the intent of the zoning ordinance or the zone plan. So I think overall, the, the project both meets both the positive and the negative criteria for the variances requested, and could be granted. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Joseph, do you think it's, maybe it's prudent if this comes, since the board has just heard both of these testimonies? If they want to ask questions of these witnesses, maybe they can?
Absolutely.
At this stage, right?
Sure.
They can always ask questions.
Of course.
As well in two weeks from now. But if any of the board has questions for either.
While it's fresh, absolutely.
Yeah, Mr. Davino or Ms. Worstel?
Sure.
Go ahead, Ms. Allen.
I guess this would be for Mr. Davino. Good evening. The affordable housing, do you have any idea where would be? Would it be in one block, or would it be spread out all, all over the building?
That actually is probably best first, Mr. Joseph.
Oh, okay. We, we work with the Affordable Housing Administration on the location of those units. They're typically spread throughout the building. They're, they're usually not the best units in the building, or the worst units in the building. They're spread out throughout the building.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question.
And I'll just add that there's, three-bedroom units have been incorporated into the. And I'll just add that there's, three-bedroom units have been incorporated into the, into the project, so an affordable can be a three-bedroom component, so.
Okay, yeah.
I think this question is for Mr. Davino. You talked about replanting the tree that's right in the, or the, the different trees that are in front of the building, the existing building, not necessarily those trees.
Right.
And you said they were going to be replanted somewhere in the neighborhood or on the block. Who's going to be responsible to remove those trees and put them somewhere?
Well, I think that's probably something that should be, hopefully if the board finds it, to approve the application, that put it in, in the resolution, that, that the contractor or the developer would be responsible for working with the community and exactly where they would want those trees.
And of course, the cost would be the developers to do that.
So we did assess it, there's a dogwood, there's a, I think, a two red maples and a plum. So they're the four mature trees that can be relocated. Of course, they have to be done at the right time of the year, so that's, that, that's been mentioned to the, to the community board, and I think that the developer, I can't speak for the developer, but I'm, there are four trees, and I'm sure they can be relocated without a problem.
Yeah, I, I can speak for the developer and the developer has no problem.
Francisco, this might be a question for you. Will the Department of Forestry be involved in this because of the trees or not necessarily?
Yes, that is a standard condition, the city planning does, but.
Okay.
And we have, I put the required number of street trees in, there was one taken out because at one point, the community board wanted a, a location for a package deliveries. So we actually, and I don't know if we can still do that, because they're probably two separate owners at this time, but we actually made us an area between 140 and 146 for trucks, the small trucks to pull in for, for package drop-off.
And Dennis also previously testified that really the reason why the trees in the courtyard are getting removed is for, to not block off the street during construction. It's, it's a balance. If we're not able to use the courtyard for staging, more of the street needs to get blocked off for a longer period of time. And it's a narrow street to begin with.
Do any other commissioners have any questions?
I'm just looking for Maggie's report, because I don't want to guess on the age of the building. Approximately 1926, as, as we know with, you know, records this old, everything is approximate, but approximately 1926. No, so I think you heard some testimony from Carolyn this evening that it was previously used as an apartment building, as residential apartments. The university took it over at some point in the past, they, they purchased the building. I'm not sure exactly when they purchased it, but they purchased the building and began using it for university use.
I have no idea.
When, when the university purchased the property, those records are also very old. I imagine it would be around the same time as it was rezoned as university.
I can find out for the next time we.
Next meeting?
Yeah, I can probably find out.
We could dig into that, the, you know, again, the, some of the records are not incredibly clear.
So I may have missed this, but how many bike spaces or racks are being provided? And a comment was made by, I don't know if it was Carolyn that made the comment, that it was for electrical, they wanted to make sure that electrical bikes were not inside the units. So are these spaces being designated just for electrical bikes?
No, so one of the concerns at, at one of the community meetings that we had is that more and more people have these electric bikes or electric scooters, and there are some concerns because of some stuff in the news about batteries overheating and fires starting within the building and because it's an old building. So how were we mitigating that? That's not the only reason why the bikes are in the backyard, but it helps to satisfy that.
Okay.
Twenty-seven bike spots.
And I'm, I'm sure we could fit more if that's something the board would like.
Yeah, we use the half, one half based on.
Yeah.
The college requirements, one half per, per, per unit, so.
One half per unit, one half a bike per unit, so 27.
That, that's what the requirement was, but like I said, I'm sure we could fit more.
All right, does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, so we were not voting tonight, so we'll see you in two weeks, I guess, or whatever. And everyone will be here to present and make yourselves available for the community, and then there will be more questions possibly by all of us as well as the community members.
We greatly appreciate your time this evening, thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, so do we have any other business tonight?
There were no resolutions.
Do we have any resolutions? Nothing? Okay. So then can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yep, yeah.
Second, one in favor?
Aye.